This is a special meeting of the EDC held jointly with the Chamber. And we're here tonight to look at the topic... The topic of video gaming. So because this is a special meeting of the EDC, I'll get the formalities out of the way, and I will call the meeting to order and ask Sonya to do the roll call for our EDC members. All right. Chairperson Peters?
Here.
Commissioner Burks?
Here.
Commissioner Plaine?
Here.
Commissioner Plummer? Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Bushel? Commissioner Doc? All right. Great. Thank you very much, Sonya. So as stated before, the purpose of this special meeting is actually to educate and inform the public on the topic of video gaming. And in particular, the effects of video gaming on communities such as Riverside. The impetus of this meeting actually began last fall when there were some passionate discussions at the Village Board on this topic. And at that time, the EDC members, actually, we had our meeting and we talked about this and we realized that we were, we, as the EDC members, were woefully undereducated about the topic. And realized that others in the community probably felt that way as well. So we began considering ways that we could educate ourselves and in turn provide education to the public and to the community of Riverside on the topic. And so we did that mainly because we were hoping to decipher fact from opinion out there. So at that time, we actually found out that the Chamber was also addressing this issue. And that's when the idea came to us to hold this joint meeting with a group of panelists that were specifically chosen because they have a diverse position, they have diverse positions on this topic. And that's again, when the Chamber decided that they wanted to come and be part of this meeting to also consider the issue.
Well, first I want to start out by again thanking everyone for putting together the program this evening. But I also wanted to begin with to remind everybody in our community that Burlington Street businesses are open and looking for your business. We know it's a little hectic down there, but the company that's doing the work is moving quickly, which is a good sign. And but it is a little disruptive, but yet there is a lot of parking. The Village has done a great job of informing and e-blast all the available parking. And I'm out there daily walking around, so there is plenty of parking. I know it's a little tough, especially coming the Easter holidays here, but they would look forward to you to take a little effort to kind of step over a barricade if you needed to, but to come on into the shops because they are open for business and would appreciate that. So again, we were in the same position as the EDC, the Chamber, and we were approached in December by our Chamber members asking about the video gambling topic that was brought up to the Village Board. And one of the members had expressed our concern about how the Chamber was their position on it. And again, we did not have any information on it. We didn't know where the Village was going with it because we're not policymakers, so we tabled it until we could get more information. We were then requested by a member that if, would the Chamber take a position on this? So that's the discussion that took place then with the EDC to have this joint effort to get educated on the pros and cons of it so that we as a board and a membership can formulate an opinion, put it to the membership, and ask them if they would want to vote on it. And then that leads us to this evening.
Okay. So the program tonight is going to open with some questions for our panelists. And if you didn't get to grab one, there's a, there's an informational sheet at the back that describes and gives background of each of our panelists. And so the panelists will receive questions from Dave and myself, and then we will ask questions of the panelists from the audience. And when you came in, hopefully you were able to receive an index card. And if you have questions throughout the whole presentation, please feel free to write your questions down on the index card. And feel free to hold them up in the air, don't be shy. And we have an EDC, a couple of EDC members who will go around and collect those cards. Those, and they will then bring them up to Dave and I, and we will pose the questions to the panelists. The reason we've set it up this way is, first of all, in order to make this meeting as efficient as possible. And then also to make sure that we know what are the most relevant questions out there. If we're getting the same questions over and over again, we can consolidate that and we can let the panelists know that we are, that this is a very important question from the, the audience. I think this is probably a good time just to remind everyone that this is an educational session. It's a session where you can come and ask questions about issues that you might not have a full grasp, understanding about. Or if you don't have any idea about video gaming or its effects on communities like that, this is the time to ask questions. This is really not the time to express opinions that you have about video gaming. In fact, it probably would be counterproductive at this point to do that because this is not, we're not making any decisions here. This is truly just an educational session. And it's, it's designed for you to be able to ask your questions, really have a thoughtful answer from educated and diverse backgrounds, and then make your decision about what your position might be. So that you can then go to the Chamber, and you can then go to the Board and express those opinions. I'll tell you, the EDC has not been asked to take a position on this matter, and we don't have any intent to take a position on this matter at this time. So it's truly just an open forum to ask questions. We wanted this to be very open for people to express their questions without feeling like, you know, there's opinions out there that might be contrary to theirs that would be expressed back to them. So with that, I think we'll introduce our panelists.
Okay. And just as a reminder, to avoid some distractions here, is to silence your cell phones, that would be very helpful. Again, I'm David Moravicek. I am the President of the Riverside Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also the owner of the Ivans-Moravicek Funeral Home here in Riverside, which I am a resident. To my left here is Liz Peters. She has been the Chair of the Economic Development Commission here in Riverside Advisory Board. She works with the Village Representatives and Residents to study retail business in the community and recommends plans for encouraging commercial development and improving the Village sales tax revenue and tax basis. Liz is an intellectual property partner at the Chicago Law Office of Barnes &amp; Thornburg. On our panel this evening, we have Riverside resident Larry Forstberg. He has served on boards for the Riverside Township J.C.'s, the Little League, and the Riverside Public Library, and he was the former District 96 Community Caucus. Since 2006, Larry has served as the Executive Director of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. He's the founding Board Member for the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Educational Foundation. Beginning in 2014, he added the role as the Economic Development Director for the Westmont Economic Development Partnership. Larry also serves as the Treasurer on the Board of Trustees for the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau to proactively promote tourism in the greater DuPage area. This includes the Brookfield Zoo in our neighborhood. We have also Kathy Gilroy of Villa Park. Kathy volunteers at several organizations, including the Illinois Church Action on Alcohol and Addiction Problems, the Northern Illinois Anti-Gambling Task Force, and StopPredatoryGambling.org to monitor gambling legislation, contact public officials, and speak out at public meetings. The Citizen Advocacy Center in Elmhurst gives Gilroy, gave Gilroy a 2012 Citizen Initiative Award for her indefeatable advocacy efforts. Rounding off the board, we have Tim Latner, also of Riverside. He's the former owner of the Latner Entertainment Group Illinois from 2009 to 2013. As a licensed operator, his company installed and serviced video game terminals to bars and restaurants licensed to host them. Since 2013, Tim has been the CFO for the Wyoming Horse Racing LLC. Okay. Liz, we'll start with questions?
Sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll start with a few very general questions. This first one is actually for Tim. Can you tell us the history of video gaming in Illinois and how does the state manage video gaming?
First of all, thank you for putting this together, Liz and Dave. Video gaming came about by a law passed by Governor Quinn, I believe it was in 2009, and it was passed to take out the illegal machines that were in the bars and restaurants that were not being regulated or taxed by any state agency. The video gaming is controlled by the Illinois Gaming Board, which has complete oversight on the installation and the follow-up of all licensing of locations and personnel in the field of the video gaming. Personally, to get a license from the Gaming Board, you have to go through an FBI background check. You have to go through fingerprinting, you have to go through an intensive IRS audit, bank audit, all that. The locations that receive the machines also have to be audited and interviewed by the Illinois State Police. So there's a very intensive background and research that is done on every individual from ownership to management to technicians who work on the machines all have to be approved by the Illinois Gaming Board on background checks and research. In terms of the state of video gaming, you know, it's here. It was brought to light because I think there were people that didn't want the black market people to profit from that without the state or the city getting their, their tax cut. I personally saw a business opportunity in that because I seen them in bars and restaurants throughout this area. And I said, this is something I could do, and I applied for a license, and I got one. And I went out and I petitioned businesses to use me as their terminal operator. I was the guy that was responsible for buying the machines, putting them in their location, making sure they worked and set up. I was in charge of collecting the money from those machines and making sure that the state got their share and the location got their share as well. The financial risk for all of this venture is placed on one person and one person only, and that's the terminal operator. The state has no financial investment in it, and the location has no financial investment in it either. So when, when you talk about making a financial decision in, in, in business, you know, free market enterprise couldn't be a better place to establish what this, this business is. I, I could tell you that on a per-location basis, if a location was to receive five machines, five video terminals, the investment is over $100,000. And that's borne by the terminal operator solely. So it is not a, it's not a cheap endeavor to place these machines into a location. There's a lot of study and, and thought to go to placing machines into a location.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The next question's for Larry. How has video gaming evolved at the local level and what type of businesses tend to get involved with video gaming?
Well, as Tim mentioned, back in 2009, the state put this forward. And unfortunately, at that time, they didn't really have very many strict requirements or regulations in place. So when a lot of communities started looking at this, a lot of communities backed away from it relatively quickly, knowing that without these rules and regulations in place, they weren't sure how it was going to work. It really wasn't until about 2012 when the state put those in places, in place, and that's when communities really started taking a more thorough look at video gaming. What we've seen evolve in Westmont and from my observations, working with Chambers Road to Page County, is it starts like this. There's a community discussion. Economic Development Committee gets involved. Planning and zoning has a hearing. The Village Board looks at, you know, the issue, brings the community together, all the stakeholders to see what, you know, how this can be managed. And the way it's structured now, it's, there's a lot of tools in place to manage it very carefully. Every community does it a little bit differently in terms of the type of video gaming they may allow, and ranging from things to size to signage and so on and so forth. In terms of what we've seen, we've seen the, what I'll call video cafes, which is like a daddies come in and basically it's a turbo chef oven with a couple of machines, and those are basically part of a larger chain. And you'll see them spread throughout, throughout the state, quite frankly, throughout many states. And then you'll see a lot of local restaurants and bars and what I'll call grub pubs, you know, bars with food and alcohol. Because you have to have a liquor license in order to do video gaming. So you'll see those local folks coming in, learning about the process. Usually they're part of the process and helping, partnering with the EDC and the Village Board to set up the rules. But, so you'll see those two basic groups, local businesses or businesses that are prospective to your community, that are looking for a new location. They might be in a community that does not allow video gaming, their lease is about to expire, and they're looking for an opportunity to enhance their business, so they'll seek out a community that offers video gaming where they'll move to. So that's what we've kind of seen in the process. A lot of community stakeholders come together, the discussion usually takes, and at least in our community, took a couple of years to kind of sort through. But it was very, it was very well worth the time, and in the end, I think we came up with a program that works very well.
Thank you. Kathy? The next question's for you. What impact does video gaming have on the state of Illinois?
Good evening, and thank you Keith for inviting me to participate on this panel. I've spent 20 years studying, advising, and working with government leaders, nonprofit groups, and individuals who want to know what harm comes from the expansion of gambling. No one has paid me to be here, nor do I profit in any way from opposing gambling. The clamor for more slot machines is not coming from the public, except from those already addicted. It's coming only from those who are in the business of making money off gamblers' losses. We're not discussing video games that kids play. We're discussing gambling devices. The ABCs of convenience gambling include addictions, bankruptcies, crime, corruption, child abuse, divorces, embezzlements, homelessness, poverty, and suicides. No one has born an addicted gambler, yet over 11,000 people in Illinois have volunteered to be arrested if they're caught in an Illinois casino. They do not have that fear hanging over their heads at neighborhood mini casinos. Local one-armed bandits attract addicted gamblers. And the more accessible gambling is, the more likely that those who try it, your friends, neighbors, and relatives will become addicted to it. People go to casinos with the intent to gamble. Neighborhood gambling seduces those who are intending to do something else. The proposed machines are not penny-ante. According to the book Addiction by Design, a typical slot can be played 1,000 times per hour. At $2 per bet, that's $2,000 per hour. At a 90% payout rate, Illinois gamblers typically lose about $200 per hour. You could lose the maximum jackpot in as little as an hour. Did you know that the slots, even penny ones, do not accept coins? Paper money only. You might as well say the minimum bet is a dollar. According to the California Council on Problem Gambling, over 60% of addicted gamblers commit crimes to support their habit. However, crime related to gambling often does not happen at the gambling parlor. It often happens in the home. Although an Oaklawn Slot Parlor lost $29,000 cash, and a Knights of Columbus Hall suffered $10,000 in damages simply because of having slots. Thieves have broken into six Springfield Bars a total of 10 times, targeting their cash redemption machines, according to the State Journal Register. Illinois Gaming Board figures show 57 reported burglaries and theft attempts so far. Corruption in Illinois continues. A local reporter caught a Forest Park trustee lying about his ownership of a bar on his application for video gambling. The Gaming Board Chairman said there is no way that their agents can regulate the entire state of Illinois. They're relying on help from local police, who have failed miserably in their regulation of, quote, "for amusement only," unquote, and lottery machines. Three mini casinos in Mundaline were cited for allowing underage gamblers, but only because Mundaline Police did a sting, the only known local police sting. There have been 85 instances so far in Illinois of children left in cars while a parent gambles. Casinos patrol parking lots, bars do not. To generate $100,000 per year in local taxes, local gamblers would need to lose $2 million per year. That $2 million per year in gamblers' losses do not drop from heaven, they come from families' pocketbooks. Gambling is not new business. It simply redirects what could have been sales for local grocery stores, gas stations, furniture stores, thrift stores, even church collection baskets, mortgages, and rent. First, food and drink sales decrease because that money is going into slots at bars and restaurants. Sales at other businesses decrease because that money is also going into slots. Employees embezzle from their employers to play the slots. Cook County has approved an, an extra tax of $200 per machine. Nonprofit organizations were once given a monopoly on offering gambling. When that was the only way to gamble, their fundraising was very successful. That advantage was lessened when casinos opened. Having casinos, casinos in every town takes that advantage away completely. Now moving into many Illinois communities are hole-in-the-wall joints with five slots and a liquor license, competing with local nonprofits and existing long-established local businesses. Your grandparents banned gambling with local codes calling it a criminal public nuisance. Were they right or wrong? Studies have shown that one net job is lost each year for each gambling device, and almost one new problem gambler is created by each gambling device. We now have over 23,000 legal convenience gambling devices in Illinois, more than any other state, even Nevada. How do you think gambling has affected the economic condition of the state of Illinois? Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Well, we have some other questions that we'll put out to the, to the panel. And just staying with what Kathy had said, the impacts on community and from statistics and everything. And you had touched on some illegal activities and some crime. Has this, is there any other instances of like some crime statistics that, that have been prevalent, like, and you know, if Larry wants to start too, while Kathy's looking through, in the DuPage area and in Westmont particularly?
I'll be happy to speak to that. There was an extensive amount of research done with other communities that had video gaming in place to see what type of problems they were incurring. And not just in terms of burglaries or, or any type of thefts, but just in general, any type of misbehavior or any type of problems. And the consistent feedback from talking with the other communities was that they were not experiencing any problems. And when I, when I look at the places where we have video gaming that I'm most familiar with, they're, they're small family-owned establishments where there's a very closely watched business place. So they're very aware of what's going on on an ongoing basis, and that'll be inside, outside, around their property. So that is, I think, a large part of the prevention processes and a very observant owner. But no, there's been a lot of surveys done of other communities with video gaming, and consistently the responses have been that they've not received any concerns in terms of problems. And part of it, I believe, is the demographic of video gaming. The typical demographic of video gaming is, is your mother, your sister, your, you know, it's a female of 35, eight years, aging up. So typically those folks aren't getting involved in situations that are going to create legal concerns.
Kathy, you have a follow-up?
Well, as I mentioned in my prepared remarks, a lot of the crime doesn't happen on location. If, if there's a divorce, how is anyone knowing that that's related to video gambling? Or an embezzlement from a business? It oftentimes isn't even linked to gambling at all. And there are, of course, though, many instances of crimes. The Pioneer Press reported last June that a dad gambled in a Morton Grove Bar while his son was left in the car. The boy was three years old. He was found wandering near, near a busy intersection at 11:00 PM while his dad was in the bar gambling. He said he went inside to order food, and then he got, you know, spent time with the video gambling machine. There was a hot dog place in Northlake. Somebody disabled the lock on the front door and attempted to disable the alarm. They broke into the five video gambling machines. You know, these things are here and there with the burglaries, but for the people who do become addicted, there's studies that show that, as I mentioned, 60% of them will commit crimes. So whether that crime is, you know, child abuse, or whether it's a break-in, you know, there's various types of crimes involved.
Just want to, maybe Tim can answer this, just as I wrote some things down. You had mentioned, Kathy, there were 23,000 legal, is that the video gambling machines or locations?
No, that's machines.
Machines.
And that does not include casinos.
Okay.
That's just the ones in the bars and the restaurants.
And then you said that five is the maximum amount of machines that could be, but could it be less?
Yes, it could be less. A lot of times the terminal operator will assess the establishment and say, you know what, for me to make that investment, I'll start out with three, and if the business is good, they'll add up to five.
And there was something about a maximum payout. Is there a maximum payout in the machine, or is that, and is that limited by the location or the operator?
No, the state has limits on max, max payout per spin.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I guess any of the panelists can answer this. Larry, you had touched on the concept of having tools in place and, I guess, regulations in place to kind of minimize the impact of video gaming. And my question, I guess, is partly for Kathy. Excuse me. Have you, have you, are there any studies out there about how that, those tools either positively or negatively affect the issues that you've been bringing up? Like, I think Larry, you'd mentioned, for instance, you know, putting video gaming in a different room, having regulations requiring the video gaming can't be heard in the rest of the establishment, things like that. Has there, is there any, I guess, study related to those kinds of, I would call them, community regulations, community requirements to be able to have the video gaming in a facility? Is there any impact one way or the other with regard to those tools?
Well, there was initially a requirement that the machines could not be viewed from outside the business, but then the Gaming Board eliminated that requirement. They do have to be separated in some ways so that children can't get to them if it's a family business, like a restaurant. But simply putting up a rope, which is what some businesses do, it doesn't prevent children from seeing them or hearing them. You know, there's really no way to prevent that.
The type of barriers tend to vary greatly from business to business depending upon the layout of the business. And sometimes it simply is a rope or some type of barrier. And again, that's where the ownership of the establishment comes into play in keeping tabs on that. There's so much risk, and this, the Gaming Board is so strict with their licensing that if, if you were to have multiple infractions, you'd lose your license. And so the owners are very serious about how they maintain and monitor systems. That's been my observation since day one, actually. Have you seen that in your experience?
We have. And the Gaming Board will come out and do a site inspection on every location to determine if they meet or violate any standards in terms of placement that they have in place.
And I think Liz's question, though, is in particular, is besides what the Gaming Board rules are. A village itself individually can put limits on those machines to be allowed into establishments as far as signage, if there's lights on the machines that can flash, if there's sounds, it can be advertised openly because you'll see some businesses that have banners letting you know that they have video gambling. All that can be restricted out if the village chooses?
Well, in our experience, we've, in some cases, in the video cafe experience specifically, we limit the number of TVs. We limit signage. We limit the square footage that they're allowed because we strictly want it to contain how many of those establishments we have. A very strong preference for having it available to local restaurants, again, grub pubs, places like that, that were pre-existing businesses versus the ones that would come in. And you know what, there's, there is a lot of interest when, when someone puts video gaming in place. I'll use an example. We have a strip mall where there are three openings, and a gentleman wanted to come open, in and open three consecutive video gaming establishments, you know, in and open three consecutive video gaming establishments, you know, like a boardwalk, if you will. And of course, that wasn't what we were looking to do. So again, local ordinances can go a long way towards governing what can and cannot be done. So whatever the community decides is what happens, quite frankly.
And also, in a lot of local communities, the liquor commissioner, is a lot of times the mayor of these local towns, and they are the ones that have the final vote on whether you get a liquor license, because without a liquor license, you can't get video poker machines.
Kathy, go ahead.
I'd like to counter about the gaming board itself. They do the initial inspection, but once the establishment is up and running, they really, they have very few agents that can go out and, you know, monitor all these, there's over 5,000 locations, to get back to your previous question, Dave, right now, and to monitor 5,000 locations located all over the state of Illinois, you know, is almost impossible for them to do. And even as far as the infractions, there have been several establishments already that lost their liquor licenses for whatever reason. There was one in Huntley that kept operating for 20 days after they no longer had a liquor license, and all the gaming board did was fine them for the amount of the revenue during that time period. And then another one came up at the last meeting that also, I don't know what happened to their liquor license, but no liquor license, and still continued to operate the slot machines.
And I would agree with that to a certain extent. The state board has only so much of a reach, and I would say they're understaffed. But on a local level, your liquor commissioner, your deputy liquor commissioner, the local police department that often will go in and do, you know, checks to make sure they're not serving underage and so forth, is usually your same folks that are looking to see what's going on and are in your eyes and ears. Plus, people in the community are very vocal. If they see something that's not quite right, our police department, our chief of police, our mayor are hearing about it right away. So there's, you know, we haven't experienced that concern, but I can see where it can happen in a larger community if you don't have some of those enforcements in place.
I guess one more question, and then we'll open it up to questions from the audience. Just generally, you had talked about, Kathy had mentioned, I mean, as an Economic Development Commission liaison, you talked about how with one, with each unit that gets put out there, there's one, I think you said one job goes away. Are those based on, I mean, is that a state level? Is that a, you know, a city level? How did they correlate, I guess, one-to-one that there was a, that kind of loss of jobs? Because I think, from our perspective, we do want to know if we're generating, you know, economic incentives or if we're creating problems with that.
Well, what I was quoting from is a study done in 2007 by economists. I could find out for you the answer in more detail to that question, but they reported that there was one net job lost each year for each operating electronic gambling device.
Okay.
I'll make a note to get you more information.
As long as you brought that up, do you mind if I make a comment on economic development and what these mean to the local communities?
Please, yes.
So prior to coming here, I looked up on the Illinois Gaming Board's website. These are 2015 numbers. Berwyn has 53 locations, 244 machines. They did $7.8 million in gross revenue, out of which the city got $400,000. Lyons, 17 locations, 80 machines, $4 million in revenue, out of which the city took in $204,000. Brookfield, 18 locations, 81 machines, $3.1 million, $156,000 in revenue to the city. So those are the economic figures that are there for everyone to view.
There's also another component to that when it comes to economic development. There's very seldom a business that we talk to that we're recruiting to move to our community that doesn't want some type of economic incentive, whether it's a waiving of permits, whether it's a revenue, sales tax revenue share, whatever it may be. We found that having this option available has allowed us to take some of those incentives back and simply say, well, by having video gaming here in the community, it's going to increase your revenue. And for businesses, there's one particular business, I'm thinking of that close, it was in business 29 years, in Willbrook, that we're in discussions with now, that was fine. It's all the economic incentive they needed to consider looking at our community.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Well, and I guess we'll ask Keith if you want to start collecting some, or if you have some cards there already that we can start addressing some of the questions that our audience members have?
[inaudible]
Okay.
Yeah, so if we could get a few more cards, Keith, that'd be great. Just raise your hand if you'd like another card, so he can find you. All right, we'll start with this one.
Okay. Is there any reasoning, is there any reason the video gambling issue can't be put off for a public referendum to all of the village residents? Now, and I don't know if that's necessarily a question that, but maybe Larry, you could answer, because you're at the meetings for the villages there. Have you heard that where some communities put these things up for a public referendum?
I'm not aware of any. I'm not saying it's not possible to do, although I'll tell you again, in our specific instance, there was a two-year process where we had events like this. We had a lot of discussion of planning and zoning, which is a public hearing where you basically are testifying under oath. Village board meetings were, there was a lot of discussion, both pro and con. So after discussing it after about, for about two years, I think we had thoroughly gone through about every possibility before the village board felt comfortable enough to go forward. But again, a thorough discussion of, you know, with stakeholders throughout the community, I think, was the important part. Again, I'm not familiar with anybody who's done a referendum, but, you know, that certainly would be an option.
Go ahead.
There have been several referendums, and the Video Gaming Act does allow for a referendum. There's specific language that needs to be in the question, and if 25% of the registered voters say that they do not want the video gambling, it's binding. However, Winfield did such a referendum. It came back as the residents did not want the video gambling. Winfield passed an ordinance allowing it anyway, in total violation of the binding referendum, but the gaming board is observing the residents' desire to not have it. So they aren't issuing any licenses there.
Interesting. All right, so the next question is for Larry. How many video gaming establishments are in Westmont, and what percentage of those establishments are restaurants versus bars that only, you know, might serve bar food?
We have 12 video gaming establishments in Westmont. We're a village of 25,000 people, about 4.5 square miles in size. Five of them are video cafes, which we have now maxed out. We will not allow another video cafe to come into the community, and we control that by the number of liquor licenses that are issued to them. Three of them are sports bar and grills. The balance are restaurants.
Question, Tim and Larry, it says, since local municipalities, they receive 5%. That's what the share is, is 5%? Okay. Of the revenue gambling losses. So for Riverside to be in the 50,000 range of receiving revenue, that means there would have to be $1 million gambled at the machines that wasn't paid out. How can that be good for local economy when people are spending, say they are spending $1 million on the machines, that's money that they wouldn't have? What is the percentage that the operator, of the owner, what does the owner get at an establishment?
So the split by state statute is, there's coin in, which is a dollar paid in, and then the winnings. And then there's the net gaming revenue, which is, depending on the machine, could be 9.2% hold. That being said, it is, by state, it's 35% to the terminal operator, 35% to the host location, and 30% to the state, out of which, out of that 30%, 5% of it goes to the local municipality.
So it would be, for Berwyn to receive $400,000, it would have to be an $800,000 loss. That wouldn't include the, like, is the not, not the gross on it?
Correct. However, you gotta realize that when a dollar in may generate multiple plays. So it's not, it's not generally $1 in per spin. If they get free plays and all that, that counts towards all that money. So it's not really $1 million being bet. It's $1 million being gambled.
Gambled.
Yes. 8 million was lost.
Yeah, 8 million, right. I was taking the, from the $1 million for Riverside to receive 50. Okay.
From a Westmont perspective, the revenue that was coming to the village was not a top priority. The village wasn't doing this to generate revenues in support of the village. You gotta remember, this first proposal came up in 2009. We were in the depths of one of the worst recessions since the Great Depression. So we had business owners that were coming to the village saying, we need some help here. We need to stay afloat, otherwise we're going to go out of business, and something like this can help us. Well, the village opted out at that time because of the lack of real regulations, and it wasn't revisited again in 2012. Now, 2012, we were in better shape, but they were still reeling from that downturn and still saying that something like this could be of real help to them. And looking back, and we go back and revisit with them on a regular basis, they continually tell us that a lot of the money that they are receiving from video gaming is being reinvested in their, in their community, helping retain jobs. It's been an overall plus-plus.
Okay, this is another question similar to this. Is any portion of the revenue required to go to gambling addiction treatment services?
No.
All right, there's the answer to that one. Got a few more about revenues.
One was just simply, why, why is it so popular? Video gaming, just...
Because it's a vice, because it's an addiction. I mean, all vices are desirable activities for a lot of people. And people don't keep gambling and losing their money unless they're addicted. I mean, why would you continue? You know, the longer you gamble, the more money you're gonna lose. I mean, it's just a matter of mathematics.
Another person asked, I've seen ATM cash machines in bars with video gambling. What is the maximum allowed withdrawal amount of money per day, if you know? And I don't know if that means from the ATM cash machine. I assume that's what that means, if there's a maximum withdrawal amount.
So the machine they're talking about is a redemption center?
Okay.
And it is to pay out the patron, the winnings from the machine that is right next to it. Some of those machines can play a dual role where they're an ATM as well, but it's my experience that most of them are not. They're singly just a redemption center for the video poker machines.
I think maybe that question was just in reference to a regular ATM machine, like a bank ATM. If there was any restrictions on, in establishments that have it, how much money, because some of them, like now, if you go to a bank, they limit you to $500, $600 a day from your account. I think what they were asking, was there any regulation that, a company, a bar that has?
Not that I'm aware of.
The next question probably has, it has multiple parts to it, and it probably would be good for all three of you. Are there any studies regarding, first, the impact on real estate values for residential areas? Second, the impact on time on market for residential areas, again, probably related to real estate. And then, third, in particular, small self-contained communities like Riverside. So in the larger sense, you know, across Illinois, if you will, and then also if there's anything related specifically to smaller communities.
I have no knowledge.
I'm not aware of any studies either. I can understand, I think I can understand the basis for the question, because in some communities where video gaming is available, there's a lot of signage, a lot of it often looks very tacky, and I can see why someone might look at some of those establishments and say, wow, that's a detriment to the neighborhood.
There was a realtor that testified at a St. Charles board meeting that said that when families are looking for a home, slots is not on their list of things that they look for. She didn't actually say that it would be something that would keep them from buying a home, but I think that was her implication.
Well, on the flip side, you could probably also say that if someone was to get a video poker license in an establishment, it would increase their business resale value as well.
And sorry, I don't mean to cut you... Similar in that kind of vein, since we're in it, studies regarding impacts on other businesses in the area. You know, if a video gaming establishment moves in, you know, like particularly in a downtown area, are there any studies related to how it impacts positively or negatively the businesses around it?
I'm not aware of any studies, but I can share that when we went through our process over those two years, a lot of the feedback from the local business owners was concern over surrounding communities that offered it, and concern about losing business to the surrounding communities. It was a very similar discussion as when we, when the smoking bans were being discussed around the state. A lot of businesses, bars, restaurants, were concerned that if their town had a smoking ban and the town next to them didn't, that you'd lose business. Thank goodness the state put in a statewide smoking ban and leveled the playing field for everybody. But that was what we heard throughout the process. Business owners wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to compete with surrounding communities.
Larry, they were wondering, in Westmont in particular, what's the percentage of the... Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy. Go ahead.
I was onto that. I actually found the answer to the question you asked earlier, Liz. The average worldwide was one net job loss per year per slot machine, and that's from the U.S. International Gambling Report, 2009. But the leading study from Australia concluded that for every 80 video gambling machines, $2 million was drained from and damaged the local economy each year. That money doesn't just, you know, drop from heaven. It's lost sales someplace else.
So they were just curious as to, in Westmont itself, what is the percentage of the establishments that are restaurants and bars that have video gambling machines? Of all the restaurants and bars, is there a percentage of how many have it?
It's a minority, and we have a lot of restaurants in town that have no interest in having video gaming. It all comes down to their clientele, it comes down to their personal preference for managing their business, and how they feel if it's into the ambiance that they're trying to create with the customer. And so it's a very personal decision. We often will get people moving into our community and opening a restaurant that have absolutely zero interest.
And have you heard any, again, I think this is all going to be on a local level, is the reality of what local law enforcement can do in monitoring the age requirement. And again, I think you had said that, it was that the liquor commissioners and the police chief and the police and the community...
And the business owner, because the business owner has so much at stake.
Yeah, they don't want to lose that license. I mean, they're hyper vigilant on making sure that they comply.
And back to that previous question, I'll add that, you know, we have 12 establishments, we have 95 restaurants in Westmont.
Kathy, do you know if the state of Illinois puts any of the funds that it receives, is their profit towards gambling addiction services or anything like that? Do they have programs available for that?
The profits from the video gambling go to the capital fund, which is construction. So it's, and some educational, I believe, as well. The casinos, at one time, funded gambling addiction help, but I believe that was even dropped. So it's basically, the people that have a problem get dropped on the church's doorsteps is what really happens.
And that's probably the same all through, like with alcohol, drug addiction services. Those are mostly funded, like you said, by nonprofits or groups, not necessarily from the state.
Well, but you have your, you know, programs and grants and all kinds of things for alcohol and drugs, and that just hasn't happened for gambling.
Okay.
Not in Illinois, anyway. Some states, Iowa, does take a percentage of all their gambling revenues for help, but Illinois does not.
Okay. All right, so the next one, I think is for anyone. As a non-liquor licensed small business owner, I would love to have five magic boxes sitting in my retail shop generating thousands of dollars. Um, all business, all small businesses are hurting. How is the, I guess this, they're saying this, I assume they mean video, uh, permission of video gaming, fair to other businesses that don't necessarily have liquor licenses?
That's a, that's a very good question. We have a coffee shop in town that had, asked a similar question a couple of years ago when this was becoming more popular. And because of state law, liquor license is required. However, if you went and met with the owners, and I'd be happy to facilitate a tour of those in our community, they would tell you that they would prefer not to have a liquor license. Very liquor, very little alcohol is sold on the premises. Again, you typically have a female thirty-five or older having a cup of coffee there, soft drink, very little alcohol sold. But as long as the state requires a, a liquor license, um, I, I don't see that changing.
The only thing I would comment to that shop owner is, get a liquor license.
Kathy?
What's happening in Illinois is that all kinds of businesses that you would never expect to get a liquor license are. There's a scuba shop with a liquor license. Autobody repair shops getting a liquor license. Here's, in Rock Falls, three beauty salons want liquor licenses so they can get the video gambling machines. Ice cream parlors. In my town, there's one in a children's arcade. They have five slot machines in there.
And, and that is happening around the state, that truly is. And that's where village leadership comes into play, and the community stakeholders has set, you know, parameters on how this works. But there, it does happen, and, you know, I certainly would support some of that.
I agree. That shouldn't happen.
Does the, uh, a restaurant or a, a bar having a video gaming machine sells their business, does that license get transferred to the new owner, or they have to start from scratch?
Well, the liquor license is one thing, how the city handled that is independently, but they have to reapply through the Illinois Gaming Board on, uh, the transfer of that license to be granted a license to place those machines.
And I'm not aware of any communities that allow a liquor license to be transferred.
Even if there's a change in ownership, you know, or, or change in, uh, a new person coming into a business, they have to be investigated by the gaming board.
And was there any, uh, uh... In Westmont in particular, uh, any feedback from like families that, uh, or business owners that heard that people would not be coming to their establishments anymore? Especially in a, a family type of, uh, restaurant that does have a bar because of the, the machines?
In, again, in conversations with the twelve, uh, owners, the answer is, is none. And, um, one is in a, a, a very family-focused pizza place, and they've set their video gaming off to a side, kind of in a closed area. So you, it's a destination for one to get there and to, to, to video game. So it doesn't interfere with the rest of the activity within the restaurant. But no, we have not heard that. But again, um, many restaurants that have moved in or have been there have no interest. So it's dependent upon the business owner to decide whether it's a good fit for their business.
I have an answer.
Okay.
This, this is two doors away from Safari Land in Villa Park. It's a Betty's, and here's two little kids walking by, the Betty's, which it says slots and video poker in the window, twice, in a sign on a, in front of it. And, and then they go into the Safari Land, and there's slot machines in there as well. So, um, children are being exposed to this, that... I know my dad, when I was young, you know, we couldn't even flip a coin. I mean, it was like, no gambling. So what's happening with children is they're becoming inured to it. You know, it's like, it's just so acceptable, it's everywhere, that the, right now, the actual gambling addiction rate among children is double what it is among adults, which is frightening.
That kinda leads into a good question here. Someone asked, two, I guess two-part question. Does video gaming locations reduce the amount of money spent on lottery tickets, which we all know are legal and sold in, in places like Riverside? And isn't, the second part of that, aren't lottery tickets just a form of gam- gambling?
Well, I'll start by saying, the largest gambling center in Westmont was our Jalisco, where the lottery tickets were right there at the checkout area. They sold the most lottery tickets in, in the, like a five-mile radius. It's, um, my understanding is that gambling dollars tend to shift pockets. You know, either you're spending it on lottery tickets, or you're spending it on video gaming, or you're going to a, a boat or to someplace, and they tend to shift. Right now, the casinos are not doing as well, and a lot of that's being attributed to the fact that there's been an increase in video gaming. So instead of going to that riverboat or to the, you know, Rivers Casino or wherever, you're just going in your local neighborhood, you're having a bite to eat with some friends, and you're putting twenty dollars in the machine. And that type of thing has changed that. What have you heard?
Yeah, I've heard roughly the same thing. It's fungible. And I know you guys are studying somewhere.
Well, um, the video gambling is hurting casino revenues because rather than having to drive, you know, twenty miles to get to the casino, if you can just go down the block, why not? But lottery is still continuing to grow.
Somebody had asked about the restaurants and bars when they're making money, uh, that do make money off the video gambling. Is there any better time, like, or did, or the bar, the video gambling place require like a two or four AM liquor license for service hours? Does that seem to matter?
Well, the games will turn on automatically. It's based on your local, uh, hours that you can serve. So if you can serve starting at ten AM, that's when the machine will turn on. The owner does not turn on the machine or turn it off.
It's based on your liquor license. You have to submit to the state what your hours of operation are, and it's tagged to that. So they automatically go on and off.
Based on the liquor license that you have? I, I had seen that Brookfield has tried, I think they eliminated all their four o'clock liquor licenses, or they tried to, so, along, and, along with North Riverside too, um, trying to reduce tho- those hours. But that's all based, again, on that, and the machines then automatically will go on and off.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. The next, I've got a couple series of questions here. I think the first one is actually for Tim. Who pays for remodeling ads and promo coupons? Like, i.e. free ten dollars to play or free snacks and soda? Who does, who pays for that at a establishment?
That's a great question, but by law, there is no inducements by the terminal operator to any La Host location. We can provide advertisement for the services of video, but that's it.
And then, um...
May I, please, go ahead.
May I ask a question? Yes.
So in my local paper, there's two different places advertising a ten-dollar come-in, you know, and... It's a coupon for ten dollars worth of free play. Are they allowed to do that?
For, for the video only. And it's probably split fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty, what do you mean?
By the location and the terminal operator will probably pay for part of that ad.
But they are, well, it, the coupon for someone to come in and get ten dollars worth of free play, is that allowed?
Yeah.
That is allowed?
Yes. Otherwise, you wouldn't see it in the paper.
Well, you never know. They actually, one of the members of the gaming board has given several, um... He's preached several times to the audience at the gaming board meetings about illegal gambling going on at establishments that have legal gambling. They keep finding it. It's, I think it's probably happening more in southern Illinois, but it is happening.
Sorry, I, I got a couple of questions here. I think they're all very similar, similar kind of questions maybe for Tim, but please chime in. You said fi- uh, max of five per facility. Is there a minimum required square footage for that by state law? And same with four, three, two, one, there's no minimum? So you can have a very small space with five, if, if it works out?
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna pack them in there to the point where you can't move or walk around. It has to be reasonably spaced. I mean, it's just, you know, reasonable spacing.
And if you have a certain number, like three at a facility, can it go up to five?
Sure.
And if it does, uh, does this cause the IGB to review and have to re-review and approve it?
Yes, anytime, anytime a terminal operator wants to add or subtract or move a machine, they have to get permission from the gaming board first.
Okay. Can citizens file complaints with the I, with the gaming board?
Yes.
Okay. These are for any panelists. What total dollars in local taxes to Riverside now and in six months? Sorry, I'm reading this wrong. What total dollars in local taxes to Riverside now and in six months with the pending new businesses? I guess what would the total dollars be in local taxes? I guess probably dependent on how much is played.
If I had a crystal ball, I'd be able to tell you, but I couldn't.
Okay. Last question. Can a non-home rule town like Riverside, uh, can we ban video gambling establishments and, and put an ordinance together for that? Can you increase the liquor licenses that are related to that, to obviously dissuade? Is there any higher trend with having higher, is there any kind of trend to have a higher liquor license fee to dissuade? And what are their, what are things that, I guess, non-home rule communities can do to dissuade, uh, video gaming?
Are you non-home rule?
May I answer that?
Go ahead.
Yes. Actually, Riverside has a ban right now. And most communities, until this came about, did, almost every community in Illinois. And this was a surprise even to our legislators. They didn't realize, when they passed it, that communities would have to overturn their bans on gambling in order to allow the video gambling.
Are the areas, we talked about machines and square, are those areas where the machines at? Are there's requirements to have video surveillance on those? By, by the gaming board? Is that, or is that just up to each business?
There is, there is a rule that, uh, the machines should be inside of an employee so that the employee can see the machines and who's on them.
With that said, every video gaming establishment I've seen does have some type of video surveillance system.
But it's not by...
It's not by non-required.
I was gonna say, we have one or two more questions. So, are there any studies to show if families stop going to places that now have slots? Did we ask that one? I'm so sorry.
Larry did address that.
I apologize.
No, no problem. It's a common question.
Well, yes, so there we go. Now we know that's a relevant question for people.
This question came, I mean, and, like, probably simple answer is that Kathy, how is this any different than alcohol addiction? If it's so bad for video, why not drinking? And again, I, it's simply, I know that we're not, we're not here today, we're not addressing alcohol addiction. Kathy was, you know, brought in to talk about the, you know, addiction. We're all pretty aware that, of course, there is alcohol addiction and, and drug addiction and everything else. We're not trying to compare, you know, video gambling to alcohol addiction, and, you know, we're glad that Kathy came to give her opinions on the video gambling.
But there is comorbidity.
Okay.
So if somebody has an addictive personality, they're likely to get addicted. You know, here we have combined the alcohol and the gambling. You have to have a liquor license to get the gambling. So the people that are, you know, going to drink are being enticed to gamble as well. I knew a, uh, addiction counselor who told me that when people are duly addicted, whether it's to alcohol and gambling or drugs and gambling, they'll gamble away their substance money. And, and studies have shown that the gambling addiction is more powerful than even the alcohol and the drug addiction. It's, it's not a substance itself, but it affects the brain in a similar way.
The last question was a follow-up to, um, the question earlier about if you don't have, if you don't have a liquor license, how is it fair to be permitted to, you know, have video gaming? And there's obviously businesses out there that just have no ability to get a liquor license. They, they can't, they, their type of business doesn't, you know, uh, isn't conducive to that. So is there any other answer? Or, or I guess, explanation for how allowing one business to have a video gaming advantage is, is, I guess, fair in a community where we're trying to promote all of the different businesses?
Well, I think the only answer to that is to lobby Springfield and to, to seek out a change. With that being said, I believe the reason they tie it to alcohol was the regulatory control that alcohol license, liquor license allows you. Uh, it's, it's, it gives you a very high level of control in what happens within that business. So, but again, I think the only answer is to lobby Springfield if that was something you wanted to seek out for, for your business.
No, I agree.
There, there are some communities that have tried restricting it, again, to their veterans or fraternal organizations, going right back to the old model, basically, you know, of allowing the Las Vegas Knights and the, you know, different types of gambling that veterans would rely on, veterans org, VFWs, American Legions, whatever, to raise money. Once a ban on gambling is overturned, it basically opens it up to any business that does have a liquor license or gets a liquor license. But, um, it, it's, that's actually something that's being considered in Springfield, a bill that would allow just the, um, fraternal organizations to do it. I think it's Elmwood Park, maybe, that has attempted to do that already?
I don't know.
Well, I guess we'll finish up with the last. Do you know, Larry, is there any increased li- insurance liability that's needed for the establishment that carries video gambling machines versus ones that don't?
No.
That you, okay.
Not aware of any.
Okay. Well, I guess we wanna take this time just to say thank you to, uh... The next step here is that, uh, the village board, our members of our community, will continue the dialogue and continue to work in partnership to determine what is the best service or growth and success of the village, and how this may fit into the overall plan. I know that personally has been very informative for myself. I know that our chamber members were looking for some answers and to be better informed, to make some decisions. I think our panel of, uh, that came out today did an excellent job. They were very knowledgeable, and we greatly appreciate it, and the EDC for all their hard work in putting this together.
Yeah, we, we appreciate, I think, from our perspective, like we said, you know, the EDC is not here to take a position on this. We're here to facilitate, uh, a community dialogue about it. And we hope that that's been, uh, something that you're able to walk away from to, and be able to go do. So we encourage you to talk to the chamber, talk to the board. Feel free to come to the next EDC meeting if you'd like to, um, talk to us as well. But, um, we hope that this does facilitate a dialogue, and we hope that you will continue to talk about this among, among the community so that we can, um, come to a community consensus about this.
There's a closing comments from the panelists as well.
Okay, yes, so with that, uh, we'd love to, an audience member has asked if the panelists would provide closing comments.
I'll, I'll start. I would congratulate the EDC and, and the folks that are here this evening, and the folks who follow up and, and watch the presentation tonight. This really is a community dialogue. It's a, it's a discussion about our community. I've been living here since nineteen eighty-two. I love this community. I've always been very impressed for, at our ability to talk about these things and not make emotional decisions, but to make back-based decisions. And so I, I applaud the EDC, I applaud the chamber, I applaud the community for having this discussion.
I too. Having lived in Riverside since nineteen eighty-nine, love Riverside, love the western suburbs. But I, I am fearful of what I see happening in the state of Illinois, and it's gonna affect small businesses. And I think this is a tool that, um, certain businesses have at their disposal that they should be allowed to use and move forward.
Kathy?
I also thank everyone that's come to this event and, and the people putting it on. And I think that, you know, is it just whatever for money? I mean, um, a business that cannot exist without gambling probably shouldn't be in business. And this is a small town, Riverside, compared to, you know, other towns around here, even my own. But I was raised in a small town in Iowa, and the reason I got involved with this volunteer work at all is because in my town of five hundred, it was a farm town. The farm next to my dad's, um, had a mortgage. The mortgage payment went to the boat, and he lost a three-hundred-thousand-dollar farm. It was nicer than my dad's farm. And then, of... And then, a girl that I went to 4H with, she had a nail business in the Quad Cities, she borrowed $10,000 from her husband's mother, then she borrowed $80,000 without telling her husband, they got divorced, bankruptcy, she lost her nail salon. And then, a young man with an eighth grade education spent, he sold a load of hogs, this is a farm town, spent the entire check on lottery tickets, and he ended up going to the county home where he was a farmer. So, I saw what it did in a town of 500 people, and it can happen in any town, and in a small town, you're like a family. You know, you know everyone in a small town. Do you wanna, is it, is it worth it for money to risk that?
All right, thank you very much. Well, with that, I'm going to move to adjourn this special EDC meeting, or actually, can I get a motion? Thank you, Christine. Any seconds? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry.